Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for October the 8th, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pearson.
Yo.
Commissioner Warren.
President.
Commissioner Roth.
Yeah.
Commissioner Roth and Reese.
Here.
Mayor Mary.
Here. Thank you. Will you rise and see for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town. God, I ask that you watch over our citizens. I ask that you watch over our elected body and staff, Lord. I ask that you watch over our police department as well as our first responders. Lord, be with us as we're here tonight and as we leave this building this evening. In Jesus' name, amen. All right. First on the agenda is a business meeting item, and it's regarding the 2019 budget, and that is an update to the GL codes. Town Administrator, do you have Resolution 2019-13?
Yes, I do. And let me get it to come up on the screen here. Basically, what you have in front of you is, as is going to be described in the resolution, the town has... The town has brought all its financial services back in-house. We no longer use a third party. And in summary, the third party that we were using had their own financial software system that had been established and modified over a 12-year period. Well, when the town brought all the finances back in-house, we purchased our own financial software. And to do some overall cleanup and to create continuity in our finances, we tried to create uniformity in the way the numbers, the actual accounts, GL accounts, are numbered. And basically, what that comes down to is, if you recall, in the actual town budget, and I'm going to bring that up so the residents can see this also, so they can see what I'm talking about. The way we do the budget is by a spreadsheet that has the accounts' line items, so that when we do purchase orders or paychecks or anything like that, they are charged to a particular line item account. So what I'm highlighting here is these account numbers here on the left-hand side. Those are the account numbers that the first two digits, in this case, 70, represent the water fund. If I were to scroll down, you'll see that the sewer fund is represented by the 80 series of numbers. And then if you look at the general fund, general services starts with a 10, police is 20, code enforcement is 25. So basically, those first two digits represent the department which we are talking about. The four digits at the end basically represent concepts. So let's look at what one of those concepts might be. We have IT services to run all of our computer systems in town. Every department has some access to IT services, so it makes sense to have the four digits that represent IT services to be the same in all of the departments. That way, whoever's doing the coding or the billing is not inadvertently making mistakes because on, you know, 10 of the accounts, the last four digits are 4, 5, 0, 1, but on one of the accounts, it's 4, 5, you know, 7, 3. And so it just makes sense from an integrity standpoint and uniformity to have all those numbers start to coincide with one another. So before I read the ordinance, I'm going to shrink this down so that you can see the totality of what I'm talking about in the sense of the ordinance, or the resolution is going to make a reference to the areas on the left-hand side that are highlighted in red, in red font, and yellow are the line items that only the number is being changed. None of the budget items are being changed. In other words, what we thought we were going to spend, what we spent last year, what we're budgeting, none of that is changing. This is nothing but a resolution to make it so that our budget matches the financial reporting system. Because if we don't, in doing our audit, an auditor should pick up on the fact that we would be coding things based upon a budget you guys adopted in July, but those account numbers are not matching what is in the financial software. So all this is, is an exercise, as we're going through gradually bringing the finances back into town, is to, you know, bring everything to uniformity. So I know this is rather small, but my point in showing you is that when you see the yellow, we're not talking about a whole lot of line items that are changing in the general fund or in the proprietary fund. I'm going to scroll through that. You can see there's only a handful in the general fund. Here, as you're going through and seeing the yellow notations. And then when you get into the proprietary fund, there are a little bit more in the proprietary fund, but... So it sort of speaks for itself. So the residents can see, that's all we're doing is changing the account numbers. So if that is something that the board wants to move forward with, you could read the resolution into the ordinance, into the record.
What is the board's pleasure?
Go ahead.
Okay. Town Administrator, do you want to read that into the record?
All right. So Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2019-13, a resolution making nonstructural changes to the previously approved 2019-2020 budget and reissuing a corrected operating budget titled Revised GL Account Numbers for 2019-2020 Adopted Budget. So we have the standard boilerplate that will skip through some of that. Town of Rising Sun is located in Cecil County, under their provisions of the Maryland Annotated Code. The third, whereas, whereas Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade, contains provisions that grant the Board of Commissioners with the power to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose and to levy assess and collect ad valorem property taxes or any other type of taxes allowed by law, and to have general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the town previously approved an annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019/2020 on July 10th, 2019, and whereas the town previously made changes to its internal financial policies, which included bringing all tasks related to financial management and administration in-house to be performed by town employees. And whereas this effort to bring these tasks in-house required the acquisition and setup of a new financial management software system that enables the town to provide detailed reporting and analysis of the town's financial affairs, to include financial forecasting and investment planning to a greater degree than previously performed under the third-party services of an accounting firm. And whereas the setup of this system required comprehensive restructuring of many aspects of our accounting processes, to include different coding sequences, greater flexibility of account descriptions, and general ledger numbering that provides greater continuity between each department fund of the town. And whereas this system has taken several months to populate and bring online and is still a work in progress, for more importantly, the general ledger numbering and account coding was not fully completed when the final budget was adopted previously, thereby creating coding conflicts between the adopting budget and the new financial software. These discrepancies between the two documents are creating unnecessary time spent identifying these discrepancies, ensuring that there are no irregularities in our monthly and year-end reporting. Whereas if these changes are not made, the annual audit performed by an independent audit agency will likely result in questions and identification of the town using GL account numbers from the financial software system that do not match the GL account numbers of any approved budget documents. Whereas, and to that end, the staff has reconciled the differences between the accounting software and the adopted budget, and had provided a revised copy of the previously adopted budget titled Revised GL Account Numbers for 2019/2020 Adopted Budget, with the only changes being the general ledger account numbers, which are shown in red font and highlighted in yellow, and a few corrections on non-budget details related to line numbering on the far-left side of the budget. There are no changes proposed to the expected expenses or revenue or other financially specific detail, projections, or expectations. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun wish to accept this recommendation from the staff. Now therefore be it enacted and further resolved that the mayor commissioners have passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 8th day of October 2019.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-13.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I think the Town Administrator's given a pretty lengthy description of what this means. Does anyone have any further questions?
Calvin, has this got the new changes on it? We can discard the other one?
Yeah, what you got. You can, that will replace the budget that you walked away with in July.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Resolution 2019-13 passes. All right. Next on the agenda is citizens' input. Would anyone like to speak this evening?
So regarding the budget.
Would you please state your name and your address, please?
My name's Nicole Hall. I'm 110 Turtleback Court. So a couple of questions. I apologize, I missed the July meeting. So was the budget on a cash basis or an accrual basis?
Calvin?
A little bit of both.
A little bit of both?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the audit done on an accrual basis? I'm assuming?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I had, when you guys transferred over into an internal system for those resources, how much money did the town save by...
A significant amount.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. During the last two-week period, the officers responded to approximately 190 calls for service, during which time they also made 13 criminal arrests. One was for distribution of drugs, two were for burglaries, five for possession of drugs, one for theft, one for fleeing and eluding, and one fugitive from another agency, one disorderly. And we also had one emergency evaluation. In addition, the officers stopped approximately 36 vehicles that were traveling throughout town for various violations. During the month of October, it's a little bit of a challenge for the police department because we also undergo audits to include the criminal information systems audit, which is very thorough and demanding. It covers a lot of privacy of information that we possess. We have that. It's a challenge for me because we've passed so many times and they come up with new things, and I seem to be one step ahead until this month. In addition, I also have an audit from the Maryland National Guard on the excess property that we have that belongs to the National Guard. Lastly, Spooktacular is this weekend. As you have seen on social media, be aware that there are going to be road closures in the area. East Main Street, North Queen Street, Pearl Street, and the North Queen Street Municipal Lot will be closed at some point in time during the event. So choose an alternate route of travel when you're coming to town on Saturday because you will find detours in place and officers directing traffic. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, there's a couple of things I want to update you on. One, the car wash, as you can see, is moving along rather quickly. I, you know, in my line of work, I actually get excited for some of the things that people are able to do with their properties. And we've got some people that have done their own work on their properties and have made wonderful screened-in porches that look fantastic, and decks. And the car wash is a great example of the property owner down there. Mr. Temple is actually doing all of that work himself, and it is really good quality work. You know, he's down there in the trenches. I have some photographs of the tanks, the underground tanks that had to be buried. They're really deep down in the ground, and they all have to be set and matched up, you know, with infrared beams to line up to the different things that need to drain into them. And it's just really, it's pretty awesome watching what people are able to do with their properties. And as I've said before, now it is an exciting time in Rising Sun because, you know, we are coming out from underneath of that water and sewer moratorium that was choking the town for so long. So the car wash is moving along. I also have had a couple of meetings with some existing businesses that are looking to spend significant amounts of money rehabbing the businesses. Over in the shopping center, Town Center, Aberdeen Proving Ground is relocating their bank over there, and they're doing some extensive rehabilitation in one of the existing tenant spaces. And there's going to be, if you recall, Hibbert Sporting Goods occupied two of the tenant spaces. Aberdeen is only inhabiting one, so there's another tenant that I'm told that we're going to be very excited about that's going to be taking the other one. The last I spoke to the, basically, property manager late last week is that they were waiting for the lease agreement to be signed. I don't know what the property is that's coming in, but that's, that's pretty exciting. The other thing is, we're still waiting. We were hoping to have some estimated costs and times for the paving, the paving contracts that we're trying to get done. We are still working with the engineer to try to get those done. Our target is to do the Valley View development, to get that repaved. There's a couple of sections, or there's a section on Walnut Street that we're looking to get repaved and some intersections. Again, we're trying to avoid paving where in the next two or three years, we plan on replacing water lines because we, we know that we have water lines in town that we need to begin to be replacing. So we don't want to throw good money after bad by paving roads and then coming along and tearing them up a couple of years later. The other thing that I want to thank Jane Bellmeyer, who was at one of our chamber meetings, and she reported on the initiative that we've all talked about, which is pretty much an internal initiative that the staff is taking, which is basically the, the concept that everything matters. And the staff, we've had staff meetings on it, our internal memos have been modified to reflect the idea that everything that we do as a staff member has an impact on our residents, and customer service is our number-one priority. And so everything does matter. We do believe that, you know, accountability is central to providing a good service. And we talk to our employees all the time about being accountable to themselves, accountable to the organization, and then being accountable to the community at large. And if any of those three items ever fail, then at the end of the day, we're failing the residents in what we're trying to achieve. And the reason why I bring that up is, we've talked about this before, as part of our accountability, we have very intricate, intricate systems in place to track concerns and issues by our residents, but we still seem to be incurring folks that are generating these complaints through social media, and they're never coming to our attention. And some of those complaints are really getting legs underneath them and are really being blown way out of proportion, and we're hearing about it after 15 or 20 different people have commented on it. And more often than not, the original information is a little bit shaded in a manner that's not exactly correct. But more importantly, we're not, we're not asking to not be held accountable when we fall short of expectation. We're just asking that people give us the opportunity to resolve it by coming to us. They can email us, they can call us, they can... The town is only one square mile. They can stop in a town hall, they can email us, they can see their elected officials. There's a variety of ways to voice those concerns to us, and just putting it out on a social media site that we may not see until a couple of weeks later gives the impression that the town doesn't care. And that couldn't be any further from the truth. Everything does matter to us, and we want to strive to do better and better all the time, but we need the residents' help. We need them to communicate with us through the means that we provided, not out on social media. And unfortunately, and it's the nature of the animal dealing with social media, we at times have people who don't even live in the Town of Rising Sun that you would swear must be at some meeting that's taking place because they seem to have a lot of information about things that we've never talked about, and they're putting it out there on social media as if that is the gospel. And I just want to leave you with this thought, and it sounds like it's preaching, and I don't mean it to come across as preaching, but this community has been stagnant for many years, and we have been asking for the opportunity to get out from underneath this water and sewer moratorium. And residents for years have been saying, wow, we wish there was more things for our kids to be able to do, and we wish there were more business opportunities, and we wish, you know, all the things that we want this community to be, we're heading in that direction. But I think we need to realize that when people think about investing in a community for business, or they think about moving into the community, if they go into some of these community sites that directly or indirectly pass themselves off as the Town of Rising Sun, that negativity doesn't do very well for people who are thinking about investing in this town. There, you know, people at times are not going to get a warm and fuzzy feeling about buying a house that's for sale, or investing in a business if all they hear is that negativity in the social media. And so at the end of the day, if we deserve that negativity, then bring it to us because we have an obligation to do better. But if we're not, if it's not brought to our attention in the proper manner, then we never know. And so that negativity just sits out there, and what I'm saying is, it affects everybody. Don't think that when you make a negative comment that's not substantiated by any fact, that that just goes out there and it doesn't affect anybody. It does. It affects everybody. It affects the residents, it affects the town, and it actually affects you. So all I'm asking is, just give us an opportunity to solve the issue. Come to us and talk to us about it. That's the better way to handle it.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
I have a question. The McDonald's is doing a renovation, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is it all internal, or is it going to be external?
It's all internal, and I, my, I had it written here, but my pen ran out of ink and I didn't see it there. Yes. That's another thing. McDonald's is doing a complete renovation on the inside. They're redoing the seating, and they are installing, and they are installing the automated menu boards in there.
Thank you. All right. Moving into the mayor's report. My report is pretty brief. The town elected body and staff all bid farewell to a long-term employee of the town. Daryl Bader served 32 years and just recently retired. For us, he was definitely a man that had been through countless administrations and who always seemed to work just a little bit harder to make sure our residents were happy. So we send our best wishes on behalf of our elected body and staff to Daryl Bader and his family. But it was a wonderful retirement dinner, and we all spent time together last Thursday evening. I did want to say that I did sign a letter of thanks to the State Highway Administration for their great job on our Main Street resurfacing. A huge thank you to them. We continue to build strong bonds with the State Highway Administration. So thank you to them for all they've done for resurfacing Main Street. Chief Peterson and myself will be going to Rising Sun High School to judge the homecoming hallways this Thursday. In addition, we will also be at the pep rally on Friday to award the Spirit Stick to the winning class. So we're excited about this. I know the chief is insanely excited about it. Last but not least, most importantly, Spooktacular is this Saturday. It's supposed to be a beautiful day. Come out with your family, enjoy our community, spend time with your neighbors and those that may be visiting our town. It's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We're expecting a lot of people. Last year, we had a little over 2,000 people come, and every single year, this event seems to build. So we're excited about it. A huge thank you to all the sponsors, especially the business community that rallies around and supports this event every year. That's how we pay for it. So thank you to them. So that's the end of my report. Commissioner Authenreth?
Mr. Mayor, what's, what's the cost of residents to come to Spooktacular?
There is no cost. It is free of charge, thanks in large part to businesses who sponsor the event.
Great. Let me make sure we didn't leave that out. I would, once again, want to make a few business announcements, and I want to go back to what Calvin said, because a few weeks, a month ago, I talked about the car wash. Because on social media, there were posts on there that because of the cost of water and stuff in the town, that we had forced them to shut down and close up and leave. And as you can see, that's totally untrue. He's rebuilt that place back. It's going to be a beautiful place. And he had three others, and he's got his signs up that he has three other places if you wanted to go there while that one was under construction. So he didn't close it down and go someplace else. He invested in our town, and we're very grateful to George for what he did there. Another event that we have here in town that I think is very popular, but just in case anybody don't know, the first Friday of each month, the American Legion Post has a all-you-can-eat buffet. It's $10. It's great food, and I actually think they're going to have to get some more seating. It's very crowded. So go out there and support, I think the Ladies Auxiliaries does that, don't they, Calvin?
Yes.
And that's been going on for a few years, and that's a great event. So first Friday of each month, 5:30 to 7:00. Just save me some chicken and green beans. And then another event this weekend that one of our local clubs puts on every year, and I attended, the Lions Club had a breakfast this Saturday over at the Fire Hall, Bud McFadden and that group, and that was, it was a great, great event. I hope they made some good money for that. So watch when those breakfasts are coming up because you can't beat the price of them. As I said at the last meeting, I've been, when I go out walking at night for exercise, I've been reporting streetlights that are out, and I see them getting fixed pretty quick. Commissioner Warren turned me on to a thing on Delmarva's site where you can report streetlights, and it's very easy, about three clicks of a mouse. And I take a picture with my phone of the numbers on the poles, so when I get back, I make sure I got the right one. There's a map.
Right on your phone, you know.
I'm old school. I still do it on my laptop.
It's like two clicks on your phone.
So it's, yeah, and like you say, it's very easy to do. So if you have a street light out in your area, it's very easy to report, and they fix them pretty quick. So there's two down by Didi Richardson Park I had to do a second request on, but...
They're, yeah, that's, that's a different story there. They're, they've already contacted me. Every time you report that, I get a phone call.
Yeah. Well, tell them to fix it. It's very dark at Didi Richardson Park.
Calvin, where are we at on that?
Which one?
Getting the light turned back on in the park.
Now, these are two streetlights right on the street.
Yeah, we've requested they be turned off.
Why?
That's what I've been trying to find out. The streetlights down in Veterans, or, yeah, Veterans Park?
No, this is Didi Richardson Park.
Sorry, okay. Okay.
Right on, right on Main Street, right there, I don't know if it's, like I said, they fixed them all except those two. So I sent a second request today about that.
Hold on, that, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll wait till I get my comments.
There must be something going on with those two because they said unresolved, because they do quickly send you an email back on those. Oh, and one other thing, you know, like I said, with a lot of the businesses and things that are going on in town, you know, I've said a few things about some of them, and they're contacting me, and everybody's doing some type of anniversary specials. they're contacting me and everybody's doing some type of anniversary specials. So, like I said, last month, Fringe Salon and Spa in town just celebrated a year under new ownership. So, they sent me a flyer that they're having, they're, they're doing a partnership with Healthies of Perryville. That's owned by a local resident, Chrissy Shepherd, and Fringe Salon, and they're going to do a ladies' night fundraiser on October 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a $20 registration fee. The money goes toward Lupus Foundation, but they're going to have gift bags and it's a, it's an all ladies' night. So, reach out to either Fringe Salon or Healthies of Perryville if you're interested in it. It sounds like it's going to be a good time for the ladies that night. And that's all I have tonight.
Commissioner Braun.
Well, last Monday, the Planning and Zoning Board heard two cases. The first application from the owners of 20 Louise Court was for a variance to construct a six-by-20-foot deck with a roof on the front of the home. The structure was to be located 19 feet from the front of the property line. The zoning code requires a 25-foot setback. After hearing the testimony of the contractor and the property owner and reviewing the documents and considering the applicable sections of the zoning code, the board made a recommendation to the Board of Appeals to grant the application with the restriction that the porch cannot be enclosed or made into another room. The second case was from the owners of 119 Pierce Road for a special exception and a variance to build a 272-square-foot in-law suite. The square footage was 2.5% more than permitted by the zoning code. After the property owner testified and considering the, and reviewing the documents that we had and considering the applicable sections of the zoning code, the Board of Planning and Zoning recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant application with restrictions that the unit cannot be rented to anyone but immediate family without applying for a special exception. This is because you need a special exception any time that you add a rental to your premises. The Board of Appeals had hearings on both cases and accepted the planning and zoning recommendations together with the restrictions and both applications were granted. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. Thank you for all your hard work on our Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Pearson.
I just have one thing, just a reminder, Thursday, October 31st is Halloween. So, I imagine we're going to start around 6:00, around 6:00 to 8:00 like we have in the past.
I'll be at your house at 6:10.
Then we'll all load up and go see Dean.
Well, you may be there at 6:00. But I want to see you, I'm going to purposely stay up at the top of my house and I want you to walk up that driveway. So, all right, that's all I have.
Commissioner Warnock.
The only thing I have this week is I'd like to thank all the Civil, actually the Rising Sun Historic Society or Historic Preservation Commission and all the enactors, the Civil War reenactors that come in from everywhere, from Rising Sun to throughout the state of Maryland and as far away, I believe, as New Jersey.
Pennsylvania.
And we have some from Virginia. Well, Pennsylvania's not that far away, but certainly, you know, when you start getting New Jersey and Virginia, that's a pretty good drive up here. I think we had a few more reenactors this year than last year. And I know that they are looking to build that program up over the next few years. We had about 500 middle school kids were, you know, went through the encampment and were educated on parts of history. It's actually interesting that Harford County has apparently, my best understanding is, they no longer teach anything prior to Lincoln's assassination. They don't even really teach the context of Civil War of why Lincoln was assassinated is my understanding. I could be wrong, but that was what I gathered. And we actually still have that in Cecil County. We teach American history much further back. The other thing is Gettysburg actually has canceled their reenactment for next year. So, it's, you know, as if, they said that due to low attendance, there's just not the interest in it. There's not been a lot of Civil War movies and such in the last few years, so they've attributed that as one of the major factors. So, we still plan to have ours next year and we're, you know, one of less municipalities or, or areas throughout the country that still do that reenactment and teach that history.
And it's a great hands-on history approach.
And I, I know, Shagger, your husband Ron is a big part of that and had some good conversations with him over the last few days and I miss you. I heard you were there Saturday and part of Sunday. I guess I missed you, but on, on both of those occasions, but yeah. You know, we, we do have actually a few people that are local town residents that participate every year. And it's, you know, everybody that's involved, I think it's almost 30 years. We're coming up on the 30th anniversary. Actually, I think there's some discussion on whether it has been 30 years or it's just under 30 years. We're trying to figure out exactly what it is, but it's been going on a long time, Rising Sun, and we plan to continue that.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Is there anything to come before the Board this evening? All right. Just some upcoming events. We will be having our Fall Spooktacular October the 12th from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. Town elections are Monday, October the 21st from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The last day to request an absentee ballot is Friday, October the 11th at 5:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are due Monday, October 21st at 7:59 p.m. Upcoming town holidays, Columbus Day, Monday, October the 14th, we will be closed as well as Veterans Day, which is actually in November. That's November the 11th. Is there anything else to come before the Board this evening? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.